Welcome.
There's a back up. So we want this back for a time. We'll start with the two elections which we make at the annual meeting and the first is for Chair of the Council.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you not? Hello, can you not, can you not hear that?
That's better, thank you.
Right. Okay, so we've got two items to deal with before we get on to other business. The first being the election of the Town Mayor and Chair of the Council. And the second being the election of the Vice Chair and Deputy Town Mayor. So let me stick to our, how do we go about this nomination? Okay. So do we have, firstly with the election of the Chair. Chris, you'd like to nominate Sally Fitzgerald. Okay.
Let's nominate you, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we need seconders for those? Okay, so a second for.
I'd like second Sally.
And is there a second for me? Thank you, Richard.
Do we need to ask before we are prepared to stand?
Well, I'm assuming they are uncertainly prepared to stand, Sally, are you? Okay. Right, okay, so we proceed to the vote then. Do we do?
Do I have a recorded vote, please?
Yeah, yes, it's probably easier if you just vote for the person you want as opposed to voting for one person and then voting against the other, so we'll just do it. So I'll call everyone's name and just get your indication of who will be the Vice Chair for this.
Now, councillor Alison Davis.
Councillor Owen.
Councillor Ben Bachmann.
Councillor Owen.
Councillor Owen.
Councillor Chris Davis.
Oh, good job.
Councillor David France.
Councillor Owen.
Councillor Stell.
Sally Fitzgerald.
Councillor Julie Arnold.
Councillor Sally Fitzgerald.
Councillor Moira Bailey.
Councillor Nick Howells.
Councillor Owen.
Councillor Phil Owen. Councillor Phil Setcharl.
Sally Bush.
Councillor Richard Church.
Councillor Phil Owen.
Councillor Sally Fitzgerald. And Councillor William Ralph.
Councillor Owen.
So Councillor Phil Owen to be duly elected. And that's it.
Thank you all. I regard everybody as a good colleague and a friend and thank you for reelecting me for a second term. I look forward to working with you all and with our staff for another year. If we act together, listen to each other, even when we don't agree, we can get along. So thank you very much. Okay, so let's move to the election of the Vice Chair and Deputy Town Mayor. Are there any nominations for deputy?
I'd like Sally Fitzgerald.
So, okay, thank you.
I'd like to nominate.
Sorry, Carol, yes.
I'll, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Carol. Okay, is there a second for?
Sorry, it's the sound, I'd like to nominate councillor Moore, I please.
Okay. Billy?
I'll second.
Okay, so are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nom, sorry, I'd like to nominate Billy Spencer.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Julie. And I'd like to nominate councillor Ralph. I mean, Dave, I'm presuming that you're, you're looking to do a second term vice.
Yes, I've got quite a lot on new job two weeks ago, I'm happy for someone else to take over here.
Okay, well, if accepted, I'd like to nominate councillor Ralph. And so if we could get. Yes, we do, so.
Just to say, I don't want to stand.
You don't, neither do I, sorry. Thanks, Julie, but.
Needed second of the councillor Ralph.
Yes, okay, thank you. So. Okay, so you've got two nominations on my right, Sally and Sam Finn. Okay, so just doing it on a show of hands.
All right, fine, we'll call the name again, exactly same way we did the mayor. So councillor Alison Davis.
Councillor Ralph.
No, councillor Ben Bachmann.
Councillor Ralph.
Councillor Billy Spencer.
I come to abstain.
Councillor Carol Robinson.
Simon.
Councillor Chris Davis.
Yeah, Judge Sally.
Councillor David France.
Councillor Ralph.
Councillor Stell.
Sally Fitzgerald.
Councillor Julie Arnold.
Councillor Sally Fitzgerald.
Councillor Moira Bailey.
Councillor Ralph.
Councillor Nick Howells.
Councillor Ralph.
Councillor Phil Owen.
Councillor Ralph.
Councillor Phil Richard. Councillor Richard Church, councillor Ralph, councillor Sally Fitzgerald. And councillor Ralph.
Abstain.
And Carol Robinson.
Councillor Ralph, please. I'm sorry, the sound.
And councillor Ralph has got the eight, that's a majority, so councillor Ralph elected as deputy man.
Thank you all very much and congratulations councillor Ralph. You're holding them. Okay. We can move on to other business then. Firstly, do we have any apologies for absence?
No, no, everyone's present.
Yeah, they are, aren't they? Okay, welcome everybody online and in the chamber. And I think for the first time we're live streaming as well, so. I feel I want to give you all the warning they give to contestants at the beginning of Big Brother. I don't actually need them because you're all very sensible and. Declarations of interest and dispensation. If anybody's unsure about whether or not they have an interest that they need where they're referred to with appendix A in their bundle. Does anybody have any declarations of interest? Councillor Church.
I think I should declare that I have a conflict of interest when we discuss the Holloway Centre from a private party agenda.
Okay, noted, thank you, councillor.
Is that better for you all?
Yes, particularly cabinet, that's the thing.
Yeah. Item five is public participation. We have councillor Grease and Mr Richard White in the public. Does anybody have any questions which they'd like to put to the council? I should say that. We may not be able to give verbal responses and you are really limited to three minutes. If you have a question that you'd like to ask, sorry, Billy.
It's okay, just because I'd like to share with you all if possible. It won't be no more than three minutes.
Okay, shall we just check that there are no other questions?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So does any members of the public have a question they'd like to ask? No?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Billy.
Okay, it is with regret that I must inform my constituents that I have taken the decision to step down from my position as town councillor from the 1st of June 2025. I'll always be extremely grateful for the large, mighty, wonderful people that elected me to the position nearly two years ago. And I hope that you will all have seen that I have tried my hardest and fought tooth and nail to be a realistic and honest voice for you all. Unfortunately, for the last few months, I have found it extremely hard and hostile and vulnerable to be involved in. There are numbers of members of the council who I truly believe want the best for our little town and for its constituents, and there are members of this council that do not. We don't want change, are not only in for self gain, self importance and deliberately do underhanded movements that do not bode well with me and my constituents. I cannot waste any more of my precious family time voluntary for a council that I do not have any faith in, which has made my decision a lot easier. I wish those councillors who are truly doing this for the good of our townspeople all the very best, and I wish our new town clerk, Richard, the best of luck in trying to steer this council into the 21st century and stop it from making irrational, irreversible decisions. But as the old saying goes, you cannot make a silk purse out of a silvery ear. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Very, very, very sad to hear that. You've been an extremely valuable member of the council and you'll be missed. I would say though that you need to put your in writing. Thanks. Thank you. The mayor's report for this month, May 2025. Well, we had a meeting with our MP Steve, Steve Wizardon this month, along with councillor David France and the town clerk. Good, humid, very encouraging meeting, I think. He definitely wants to help us in anything that we're doing and it's going to be very useful that at least one of his constituency offices is going to be based in Welshful rather than way up north in Wrexton. I've had meetings of various outside bodies, including the Friendswell High School CIO with Andy Rattray. I also met with Dr Harvey of the Burgess Land Trust. At the beginning of the month, I was on holiday, so unfortunately I missed the, all the B, the celebrations which were organised for that week. Thank you to all those councillors that did attend and I hear that the whole thing was very successful and went well, so thank you to everybody involved in that. And particularly to our staff who always help to facilitate these events and without we couldn't do that. Well, we would be able to do very little in the way of public events, so thanks to all that were involved. That's all I've got to say with that. Okay, item seven, county council and county councillor upgrades. Richard or Carol or Graham, have you got anything that you want to report on county council matters?
I'll have to say to Richard, in view of the length of your work, doing the, having the length of your agenda, then I can.
Graham, I'm very polite, thank you very much. You'll see my, my pads. I almost ran out of those, so thank you very much. Okay. Right, item eight is corporate governance. I'd like to thank all the committee chairs and members for the work they've done on these, the town clerk, of course, and the staff. Items eight, one to eight, five on the agenda have all been reviewed and agreed by the various committees involved. So it is for us to adopt these and agree them as recommended and I'm sure you've all read copies which are in your packs. I don't know whether to deal with these individually or as a block, but I think on balance it would be best to deal with them individually. So we'll start with the revised standing orders, which are at appendix E.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. So. Is there anything that they want to raise about the, I mean, the amendments are all in red, I think, yeah. I don't think there's anything too controversial there, but yes.
Just I was a little bit confused because in, I think it's four F in the standing orders in relation to committees and that who says that council can stand on five, sorry, three standing committees, but in the report on committees, it actually suggests that they should only stand on two out of three.
I noticed that myself. Yeah.
It matched.
Yeah.
If I could answer, tonight, if you agree them, if you could add the proviso that I can edit them based on your discussion later in the meeting and then that will allow me to change the numbers based on how it's going to stretch later. So it's a red name later, maybe you should match them to three. And if we do that as a committee part, but we just have got them now.
Okay, and is councillor Evers?
Can't hear a thing.
I don't know why, because I couldn't get it closer to it.
What I said was, so in the, in the standing orders, the numbers of the committees you can stand on is currently, doesn't match the report later in the agenda. So what I said is if we could adopt them now, but give me the power to amend it based on your discussion later on, it's just because of the ordering of the items on the agenda.
Can I, because I didn't hear, can I ask what number they reference for?
Yes, we're, we're on item eight, one, which is the standing order. And, and the, the reference is to the number of committees which a council can be on, whether the maximum number, whether it should be two or three. And in four F, I think it is, it says three.
That's all he was asking, Jack.
Yeah. Late, late call.
What's the number one?
Okay, yeah. So with the proviso that the town clerk can amend. That has transpired from what is decided later, is there a vote to accept the standing orders as drafted? Thank you, Alison, and seconded by councillor Church, thank you. So.
Chair, will I be to accept the, the, the decision after, after we've discussed it later or after we've gone through the?
Yeah, I think the only, the only thing that I think is unclear is just the maximum number of committees, so the town, the town clerk will be able to amend that if we decide that it should be two.
After we've decided, that's, that's what I'm getting at, yes.
I'm moving it as it is.
Sorry, Phil.
I'm moving it as it is without the change.
I have to draw my seconds.
I have, I have proposed that we accept it.
Yes.
We, as, as the clerk has asked.
Yes, that's, that's, that's right.
And we've got a second day.
Yeah, so, so there, there is a motion to adopt it as it is. If that motion fails, then obviously you can take the proposal that it stays as it is.
No, I'm afraid for the rule to eat, that one is put against the other. I'm making a motion to keep the standing order as they are.
Okay. Okay, so we've talked, well, first of all, we've got Alison's proposal, it's been seconded, so can we have a vote on whether we should accept item eight, one as drafted and set out in the appendix? Those in favour there?
Hands up.
In favour.
Eight, one.
Eight, one.
It's the, the whole standing orders, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm sure you lost, you lost me, I can't hear you.
Thanks, Gary.
Eight, one is the standing orders.
Yeah. Okay, well, that, that motion was carried, so we will adopt the standing orders as drafted, subject to the proviso that we can change the number of committees depending on what we decide later. So there's no point in having your vote that it stays as. There's every. Okay, so moving to eight, two, these are the financial regulations and they're at appendix C in your bundle. So unless anybody has points they wish to raise on this, it'd be a straight vote on whether we accept those as drafted, comes from Spencer.
I may be wrong.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have one point that I discussed with the clerk, which is five point eight. Which I, I propose reads the same as five point nine. Alison, I'm sorry, that might be really harsh on you. Sorry. Five point eight.
Yeah.
That the, it reads similarly to five point nine. So it should say, the RFO shall try to obtain three estimates, rather than the RFO shall seek at least three fixed price quotes, only because we can only try hard, we can't do any more.
Yeah, I mean, they're two, they're two entirely different things.
Yes, yeah.
And I think we decided, because you can't always get.
Yeah.
Get a, a quote and sometimes you invite them, you don't get them, so.
So that's why I would, I would propose that five point eight says try rather than will.
Use their best endeavours to obtain.
Yes, whatever, yes, yes.
Okay, so we have, we have one proposal to accept as drafted and you want to make the amendment that that be able to.
What was the amendment?
That, that the town clerk or whoever will use best endeavours to attain.
It's basically deleting the word seek from five point eight and changing it to shall try to, to the word seek.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, so if you want, so, so the, the vote is then to, to adopt them as drafted, save the amendment proposed by councillor Davis. Okay. So. Ah, okay, so those, those in favour, please proposal as amended. Oh, yes.
Hands up.
I'll have to rejoin because councillor Asbury recorded the vote, which is fine. So councillor Alison Davis.
In favour.
Councillor Ben Bachmann.
In favour.
Councillor Billy Spencer.
In favour.
Councillor Carol Robinson.
In favour.
Councillor Chris Davis.
Abstain.
Councillor David France.
In favour.
Councillor Stell. Councillor Julie Arnold.
In favour.
Councillor Moira Bailey.
In favour.
Councillor Nick Howells.
In favour.
Councillor Phil Owen.
In favour.
Councillor Phil Richard. Councillor Richard Church.
Four.
And councillor Sally Fitzgerald.
Four.
And councillor William Ralph.
In favour.
That's passed, that's with you.
Okay, so that's passed, thank, thank, thank you, everybody. I hope, I hope we don't get a recorded photo and anything on the agenda because we'll clear all of that. Everyone, moving on to eight, three, which is the risk assessment. This is, this is excellent piece of work, I have to say. Colour coded and graded one to nine. I think there are some acceptable risks that should be like the guitarist amplifier in Spine and Tap that should go up with length, but never mind, it's one to nine. I'm sure you've all looked at it, it is an excellent piece of drafting, so unless anybody has in favour, yeah, okay, seconded by Sally Fitzgerald, thank you. So those in favour, please.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Unanimous, chair. Councillor Richard, do your vote. Okay. Councillor Richard?
Yes, I do.
In favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight, four is the training plan.
Yes.
Again, a very nice piece of drafting.
I've just got one question on this.
Yeah.
It was agreed that our events coordinator would have extra training on a particular qualification that she wished to possess, I don't see it in the training plan.
No, it'll, it'll form part of her formal appraisal.
Okay, so that they will still have them.
Yes, it will form part of the appraisal. This, this plan is more, it's not, it's more public than I know.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so Alison Davis proposed to respect and seconded by councillor Ralph. Those in favour, please.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Unanimous, thank you, everyone. And eight, five is the code of conduct.
Just to say, this is something previously the council adopted England's code of conduct, not Wales's, so we just reaffirm where this kind of conduct, you've already signed up to this, when you signed the declarations of office, it's again, it's second.
I moved.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so proposed by councillor Spencer and seconded by councillor Bailey. Those in favour, please show.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Unanimous, thank you all. Item nine, committees and delegation. We all know that our committee structure has been unwieldy, time consuming and sometimes actually inappropriate. We've got proposals for the new structure, which has been devised by the town clerk and recommended by SPD. I think it's, I think it's an excellent proposal, so is, is anybody got any comments to make or should we move to vote?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. At SPD, it's a split vote on.
I can't hear, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can you hear me now? At SPD, it's a split vote on where did it go for option B or option C in relation to, particularly in relation to policy. It's something I feel strongly about in that the option C gave the, the Finance and Governance Committee the element of policy, which is a governance issue, rather than in the operations issue, which is the option B. So I would actually like to propose that we actually go with option C and not option B.
Nice. There's something to ask about, don't you think? I think, I think Richard, when he emailed me, he had a point, I, I think we should abolish, abolish all committees and shut two full council meetings a month. I think it's the only way for this council to move forward. I honestly do. I don't, I think delegating powers to committees will be the dying for a massive response. I think you're going to be, I honestly think, abolish them all, two full council meetings and it will make all the councils who have been elected at this time make the effort to go to them, to make the right decisions. So I propose we take option, option D.
Chair, I was adding that it's probably best that you take this in, in the number of stages that is set out, so I know we did this in SPD and took a while, didn't it? But so it's basically split into four different things. So you've got numbers of committees, you've got options A, B, C and D, that filled with the numbers, then you've got committee powers, which is one, two, three and four. So councillor sense, when you're saying about committees having dedicated powers, there's no guarantee that the council will decide that when it gets to option one, two, three or four, so just to clarify that even going with.
Okay, so you're going to do it individually, sorry, I, I want you to do it as a whole.
Can I second? Can I second your next proposal, please?
Okay.
Chairman, can I raise a point here? This is a formal meeting of the council. The recommendation is option B.
Hello.
That's all you're voting on in effect. You're not voting on C, X, J, Y, F, whatever, right? Liverpool's proposed that.
Uh, no, but I mean, we, we can vote on whatever we like. I mean, the recommendation from the committee, we can either adopt it or if we don't adopt it, we can replace it with something else. But I'm just listening to what other councillors have to say and which, which procedure we do adopt. So which, which will have to be voted, voted on.
But my view is that the only recommendation you've got is from the committee, and you take the committee's view first.
It was in the recommendation, it's the, the committee structure to consider the report from the town clerk.
I remind you, what do you do? I make my point. I'm recording.
It's probably better, we, just we, Laura's made a proposal and there's a second, so.
Yeah.
But the, the, the committee hasn't made a recommendation, but of course it is a recommendation.
Yeah, no, so, okay, well, we, we, we have a proposal to go with.
If that is defeated, then.
Option B, so we'll deal with that first. Is there a second?
I think you should take the, you should take the recommendation first.
Yeah, option B is the recommendation on the committee, so. Yeah, it needs a proposal and a second of option B, so.
So who wants to propose that we adopt option B? Sally, thank you. Is there a second for that? Laura, um, Estelle, thank you. Okay, so those in favour of adopting option B? Okay, now, we take option A now, then.
No, I'm, there's any.
I was saying, yes, any against?
Yeah.
Hands up.
Okay, uh, so that motion is defeated. And we'll go now to, uh, is there a proposer for option A?
Option C.
Option C.
Oh, that's all, good point.
Are you going to go through all of them, yourself? Okay.
If there's, if there's a proposal.
That's actually probably a bad way of doing it.
Yeah, so is there a proposer for option A? No, okay, is there a proposer for option C? Councillor Bailey, uh, seconder. Councillor Davis, thank you. So those in favour of option C?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Before I do a vote, can I just ask one quick question, please?
Go on then.
In regards to item C, I'm talking to the staff.
Yeah.
Is that going to cost you more time?
No.
What option would you guys prefer to go to? No, but I want to ask the opinion.
It, it's, it's basically the same. Um, my recommendation actually was option C, because I, it was the best balance. But, but I was defeated at the speed of sound.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're taking vote on option C. I think we, I asked those in favour of option C.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Those, those against? Any extensions? Well, okay, thank you. So, so that's carried. Option C.
Um, it, yeah. We need to, don't live without the safety. They're absolutely, they're very.
Correct, yes, yeah. This. Health and safety. Yeah.
Health and safety audit.
Yeah. So the two committees currently, health and safety and the audit committee, um. Uh, i- is there a proposal that we retain both of those committees?
What, sorry?
Audit and health and safety.
Yeah. I'm happy to propose, Chair.
Sorry, sorry, we, we proposing or want you to make a point?
Proposing.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so can we have a vote on whether we retain those, please?
Hands up.
Any against? Any expressions? Okay, thank you.
Can I just add that under the safety representatives and safety committees regulations of nineteen seventy seven, we are polite if staff request a health and safety committee that we have one by law, and we haven't had one for a long, long, long time.
Uh, thanks, Nick. Yes, I agree. And it's, it's something that we should be taking very seriously, and I don't see how we can really discharge our duties without a dedicated committee. Um, but anyway, that's, that's carried, thank you. So. Nine two, e- election to committees, and this will be the new committee structure.
Um. Yes. So SPD recommended option four, which was some delegation, so this was delegation. This is where we continue with the current model of non-delegated powers, um, except for events and planning committees, which would have full delegated powers over their respective areas within their committee budget.
I'm happy to vote.
Thank you.
Um, Chair, I think that you should continue how you are doing it with recommendations of all council. And I'd like to propose to take option one, I feel that it's going to be industry.
Hmm.
I think we have to vote on the recommendation first.
Yeah, but, yeah, we can vote more.
But we have to, is there a second for the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, councillor Davis, those in favour, please. Those against? Extinctions?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Okay, thank you, that's carried.
No, the next one then is, um, is the timing of meetings, um, to commence at six thirty, for all meetings.
Yes, I'll propose that.
Thank you, Alison. Is there a second down?
What, what are we, where are we?
Timing of meeting, commence at six thirty. I think it makes perfect sense. But, so, yes, we've got a, we've got a proposal, we have a second down. Uh, those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Thank you. Seems unanimous. Like, any?
And then the, the last one then is the, is the numbers of each committee. So SPD recommended that its meeting on seventh of June, that each committee shall have a maximum of seven councillors. And each committee, uh, each councillor be required to sit on a minimum of one committee, and that each councillor not exceed membership of two standing committees. So that does not, that does not include the health and safety. I think that's all, well, that's probably not.
Go back to me, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you councillor Rowle, councillor Bailey.
Seconded.
Um. So.
Obviously it's not going to affect me, but I just wanted to make a point there. That's, that is actually going to be stopping some cancers. You know, some cancers may not be able to go on, on a committee.
Yeah.
And I, 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 I really don't think that's right for the people in this town.
Yeah.
Every cancer, whether you like them or not, has been elected.
I think, I think, I think it's part of a councillor's duties to be involved in committee work, I think.
I think it's part of the duties, why they think one to sit on each committee, that's entirely up to them. I don't think it should be, you're going backwards, not forwards.
Yeah.
Well. But just with that, I think, with that.
It is the case that any councillor can attend any committee they like to.
It is, but if you're going to have delegated powers, and you're not going to, it's not going to make any difference anymore.
Anyway, we, we have the proposal, it's been seconded, can, uh, those in favour, please show?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Yes, thank you. Those against?
Against.
Are there any amendments?
Well, not whether there's a proposal, I mean, if, if the proposal falls to, to adopt it as recommended, then of course we can, uh, we can, we can hear suggestions for amendments or alternative uh motions, but if, 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 if it is a proposal.
Sorry, the chairman was a great example, that's, and I mean a great example, I think that is the wrong voter.
Okay.
If it's, so if it's seven on each, it's fourteen cancers, seven on each one.
Yeah.
You, so you have some cancers, because two would sit on one committee and then someone could go for any. If, if some cancers pick to go in, say the first seven, so yeah, we vote seven to go on there, the seven cancers may not go to any committee. That's not right for the people this time, sorry, it's not.
I agree with you.
I'm really sorry, I don't, I'm, it's not going to make much difference to me, but I go back to my statement I made in the public session, I, I think it's a very, very cruel thing to do. It's not moving this into the twenty first century, it's stopping and putting barriers up against things.
Well, and I think the scenario that you, you're describing is unlikely, but if it was to happen, then I'm sure that we might want to.
Bill, reading these things, it's not going to be unlikely, is it?
Right, I'm on five committees and I love them, but that means I've got to come off two, two committees which I love, I'm passionate about, and I'm part of them.
There are fewer committees.
But how the committee have emerged, the work is joined in the same committee.
I understand that, but again, I'm going to, I'm going to have to miss coming up.
There could be ones that each, you want to see a part of.
No.
Chair, i- if I could ma- make sure we all understand that we're talking about standing committees here with this one or two limit, and that the quarterly committee is still wel- welcome outside of this limit. So technically, the limit, if you include the non-standing committees, is in that regard, four committees.
They're missing out on two committees then. I sit on five at the moment. But I'm missing out on two if I do that.
If there's a, yes, Chair, if there's a. Sorry, I'm going to curtail further debate on this. It may be something that we revisit, but for the moment, we've taken the vote and the vote's passed, so we need to move on. We've got a very full agenda.
Do the vote, Chair, sorry.
But I think he's listened to what Evan said, because people can't do that. I think Bill has answered it.
Uh, well, I, we've taken the vote and it's passed, so I, I, I still propose to go ahead. I'd like to move on if we can. So I'm going, so is it nine two now, the elections?
Yes, did we just fought against that?
No.
No.
No, we didn't. We just voted who wants four, but we didn't vote who, who was against that.
Yes, you want a recorded vote.
One of the recorded vote, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's really important. I think it's so silly to do this, that's basically, because you've, you've half your work by taking to three committees. So surely that they can't just sit on what they want, because you've only got three committees anyway.
This is just what SPD recommended.
Well.
Um, okay, so we vote, so we'll, we'll redo the vote again.
Because we do agree.
Sorry.
Um, uh, can I just say that we are bound to vote, I think, on the recommendation before uh any, anything goes, and so I think this.
We like to have a discussion before, Bill.
This vote has to happen. Please do not interrupt. Um, and, um, but also to say that, uh, we are talking about the three standing committees, uh, the other two committees are separate from that, it's possible to sit on two of the standing committees and two, and the other two committees, essentially, so you could sit on four out of the central five.
I don't want to sit on health and safety and audit, I don't like them.
I, I just, I'm just making the point though, that let's, let's.
So thank you, Councillor, and thank you, Billy. So a recorded vote has been asked, of course, so.
I'll just recap on my resolution.
Councillor Pritchard. I just wondered if I'm invisible, you know, the invisible man, perhaps, you know, you know? You looked straight at me three times, Chairman, and you invited other people who came after me, and you know it.
Uh, really, if I, if I, if I knew you wanted to talk, of course.
What I wanted to say, what I wanted to say to you, in, in school, I, I did mathematics. Mathematics, Selma tells me, if we've got three committees and each one has got seven members on, that's twenty one places you got. So how are your fifteen councillors going to get two positions each? It just won't work. If you stop and listen and think about it, it won't work.
Yeah, so remembering, of course, that this is a recommendation from the committee, I, I think we should move to a vote.
So the recommendation was that each committee have a maximum of seven councillors, that each committee, uh, each councillor be required to sit on a minimum of one committee, that each councillor not exceed membership of two standing committees. So just to recap now, it's events, tourism, operations and development, and finance and governance. So a recorded vote being requested. So councillor Alison Davis.
In favour.
Uh councillor Ben Bachmann.
In favour.
Councillor Billy Spencer, against. Councillor Cal Robinson.
In favour.
Councillor Chris Davis.
Against.
Councillor David France.
In favour.
Councillor Stell Blevis.
Against.
Councillor Judy Arnold.
Against.
Councillor Morag Bailey.
In favour.
Councillor Nick Howells.
In favour.
Councillor Phil Owen.
Four.
Councillor Phil Pritchard.
Against.
Councillor Richard Church.
In favour.
Councillor Sally Fitzgerald.
Okay, sorry.
Councillor William Ralston.
In favour.
Uh, so. So that's the absolute majority, I know.
Sorry?
It's passed with nine votes.
Okay, so nine two is the election.
The committees have to meet, so we need people to be on them, but so we're ready to elect other committees if everyone else is.
Okay, so item nine two is election to the committees as now constituted.
Um, the chair, Sammy Ward, just says if there's more, um, members wishing to go on a committee than a vacant, than a vacancy, as in, so all the reasons that people wanted to go, then the vote has to be held for, to elect those seven people.
Okay.
So I suggest probably taking committee by committee.
Yeah, um, one question before we do that, the, the mayor is ex officio, but does that count towards the total number on each committee?
Includes the seven plus it, ex.
Seven plus, okay.
Seven.
Okay. So, um.
The first committee is, um, the first one we'll be meeting, which will be next Wednesday, is, um, events and planning, so I suggest we start with that.
Okay.
I don't give a hell, but I, I can't hear it.
Yes, so, so those who want to be on events and planning, if you could show, we know we could look at the numbers, um, so. Sally. Sally, Nick, Morag, Chris, Bill.
Don't put people online, Dave.
Yes.
I've got my hands up for this one.
And they, hands up.
Cal Robinson. Hang on, sorry, so, so I've got Cal Robinson, Chris Davis, Judy Arnold, Morag Bailey, Sally Fitzgerald and Bill, I've missed one.
And Chris. I hate this.
I, I've got Chris.
Um, Nick, Morag, Professor Phil, Julie, Carol.
Oh, Nick, Nick is the one. That's seven, so that's constituted, it's a case of its own. No election required.
Vote lucky, yeah.
Uh, next committee after that will be operations and development.
Okay, so we are going, uh, anti-trocarise, councillor France. Councillor Howells, councillor Fitzgerald, councillor Beavers, yeah. Uh, councillor Pritchard, yeah. Any online?
Any online? Carol, Bill, Julie. Any, that's one, two, three, four, five, so that's, there's two vacancies on that committee. And then next one after that is finance and governance.
Councillor France, councillor Bailey, councillor Fitzgerald, councillor Blevis, councillor Pritchard, councillor Church, councillor Rowle, councillor Davis.
And councillor Ben, both of them. Councillor.
And councillor. Exceed.
So let, let me just get these right, so there's Alison, Ben, David, Stell, Morag, Bill, Pritchard, um, Richard Church, Sally and.
Oh, that's two individual.
Yeah, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so yeah, there's two, so we'll have to do a vote.
Chair, apologies, um, can I withdraw mine and request to be on the previous committee, the, uh, development? It's just a bit easier that way.
And also, um, Sally, you can't, because there's.
That's what I'm saying, I can't, I.
Because the council's just voted to make the maximum of two.
So you're taking, taking away everything that I love and want to do, and it's just wrong to me. How, how can I, I just don't get it. Don't get it, doesn't work for me in a phrase.
So actually, with, with Ben's withdrawal, and, and because Sally's ineligible, that makes seven.
So that's seven, so we don't need to vote.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you to councillor Brantley, um, thank you, Sally.
And Chair, just to confirm, the committee councillor Brantley just asked to join, was on five. And Chair, just to confirm, the committee councillor Barclay just asked to join, was on five and is now on six?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It was, was Ben going jobs?
Is, is that correct?
I thought he went to finance.
I withdrew from finance and went to ops.
That's it.
What about Julian Carroll?
Um, so the ones who haven't got a committee are, um, you, Billy.
Yep.
But, but you're still the councillor for this point in time, so I'll have to.
You've got me on the committee.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever you want, which is.
Um, ops.
That's fine, it won't make a difference.
Um, and, and everyone else is, is gone on one, so that, that's all.
Okay.
I was hoping to go on two, but I haven't, I haven't heard yet, I want to come up yet. Unless I, and I'm sorry, I do apologize for the candor and depth, as well as bloody depth and depth, right?
We, we've done all three.
I, I wanted, I wanted to be on the two, I wanted to be on, was the, um, where am I? Services and.
Operations and development.
Operation and development, have you got me down for that?
Yes, and I've got you down for financing governance, you're on two.
I should have done, okay.
Um, Alison, same.
Okay, so. Councillor Bailey, councillor Howells.
Yeah.
Councillor Rowell.
Uh, we're gonna need some more because of the, the call, um, yeah, it's three minimums.
Would I count towards it?
He would, you would have to.
I'll go on it then, but if somebody else wants to, I'll have you on it too.
Okay. That's a thank you, Alison, councillor Davis.
And then audits the last committee.
Councillor Allison Davis, councillor Richard Church, councillor.
Are you someone else?
No, no. No, this is, this is audit.
Councillor Barclay.
Can I ask a question, Chair?
I could audit him, put him in finance.
Pre- previously, um, it was de- detrimental for people who are on the finance committee to be on the audit committee. It wasn't banned, and then, and then it was retired.
No, um, so it's not banned under the standing orders you've adopted, but it's probably an advisable to be so.
Yes, that was always the case, it's, it's not perhaps desirable to sit on both finance and audit, but it was never prohibited, and as we've got fewer committees now.
Uh, not my recollection, Chair, was that we agreed that a majority of the councillors that were on the audit committee should not be on the finance committee. And that also the chair of the finance committee should explicitly not be on the audit committee, that was my recollection.
I think that's wrong, I think that's wrong.
We're fun, remember, she's already way in the minute.
But Ben's got his.
Exactly. Uh, councillor Barclay.
Oh, sorry, that was just to be in the audit committee. Apologies.
Uh, so just to recap, I've got Alison Davis, um, councillor Ben, and Richard Church, audit so far.
I'd like to be on the audit, please.
Yeah, okay.
Phil, sorry, Phil, did you want to?
How many committees can I go on now?
You can go on two standing, two advisory, so four maximum.
So I can go on the audit advisory too, yeah, I'll go on the audit.
That's fine.
How many more is it?
Uh, we've got five.
Five, okay, that's great.
That's it, thank you.
Still, that's something.
Sorry, sorry, Stel, did I, did I miss, miss here?
I, I'd like to go on the, the audit as well.
Okay. So that's six, I think, now on audits. Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody, I, that was easier than I thought somehow, but that, that seems to have worked. So the committee's now constituted, uh, we obviously, people that request to come off one and go on another as, as we move on. But that's now the constitution of committees.
Um, sorry, Chair, um, the council actually is required by resolution to appoint to a committee, so are you just able to vote to confirm those appointments?
Uh, yes, okay, so, uh, those in favour of the, uh, committee's been constituted as we've just agreed, in favour.
Need proposal. No, you're just on it, no.
I think.
We need, we need, we need a proposal, but, yeah, we need a proposal in second.
Okay, so David France and Nancy Davis, thank you, thank you. So, uh, those in favour, please.
Hands up.
Thank you. Uh, any against?
Uh, abstaining.
Uh, one abstentions, two abstentions, thank you, Miss Dan.
Um, abstaining as well, sorry.
Three abstentions, thank you. Okay, item nine three, this is the scheme of delegation, um, to adopt the revised scheme of delegation to twenty five, twenty six. As recommended by strategy, policy and development, uh, that's at appendix F in your bundle.
It's fine. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And Chris, yes, yeah. I thought you were getting to it, remarkably slowly. Okay, appendix I, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I take it everybody's, uh, everybody's read this.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, are there any, um, views that anybody wants to make before we proceed to a vote on whether to adopt this? Uh, councillor Fitzgerald. That's okay. Proposed by councillor Fitzgerald, seconded by councillor Allison Davis. Thank you, so those in favour of.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Any against? Any extensions? Thank you, that's carried, thank you. Okay, um. Right, item ten, other governance, uh, item ten one, this is councillor allowances or allowance, um. As, as you see from the appendix, we're placed in group three, there are some mandatory, um, payments, uh, the majority are, uh. Optional at individual councillors' discretion, I guess, so councillor Davis?
I propose that we accept, uh, the, the document and accept mandatory payments, um, obviously, and do not, uh, accept the optional payments.
Whereas I haven't, I'm minded. The, uh, sorry, uh, in terms of the mandatory payment, I need you to make a decision to either pay fifty two pounds to each councillor in respect of the cost of office consumable. Or allow councillors full reimbursement, so it's one or the other, I need the category.
Full reimburse, invested.
Okay. So we've got to propose them for a full reimbursement.
Okay, there's a requirement for that, please.
Okay, so I, Julie, I'll try and summarise our report, just to, so you're required by the laws to any certain allowances to councillors, and all of you here opt out, so it's basically a random, we're talking about this, but by law, we have to say.
I've given, been given up to opt out, you know?
We've opted, we've said opt out.
When?
Yeah.
Um, there, there, there was a vote on this, um, some time ago, um, perhaps, we haven't voted on it as often as we should, and it may have preceded your time on the council, but we did have a vote.
But Chair.
Probably a couple of years ago.
Chair, council, council's not allowed to vote to opt out, it's an individual decision for you all, and section one.
And that should be confidential as well.
No, so it's, so, um, section one five, one five four, the Government Wales Measure two thousand and eleven requires you to write to me every financial year to opt out. So, but the problem is, is we have no budget for allowances, so actually, we just assumed that you all opted out.
All that's all right.
Predating me, but we're going to do it properly this year, but you're required by the report, um, under section one hundred and fifty one, to adopt the mandatory items of the annual report on the independent remuneration power of Wales. They've said two mandatory things, the one mandatory thing is that the council pay each councillor a hundred and fifty six pounds a year for homeworking allowance. And the second mandatory thing is the councillor decides to pay you fifty two pounds or allow you the full reimbursement of your out of office expenses. They're the two mandatory payments.
And because it's the care allowances.
Yeah, that's also mandatory, but you don't have to vote on that, because we have to pay it by law anyway, because they want, yeah. Um, but you'll see, because we're in, um, group three, and we are very close to going up a group to group two, which would then make us mandatory for a few more, so that you just need to bear that in mind. Um, you also can optionally pay the mayor or the chair up to fifteen hundred pounds a year, which you do already, so that one's already done. But we need to decide on this, on the mandatory second one tonight, you don't have a vote to pay it or not, you have to decide which one.
Yeah, okay, so, so everybody understands what we're.
No.
Was that clear?
Okay, what, what, what is it that you're?
Well, we're just being told it's a mandatory payment to the mayor, a fifteen hundred pounds.
No, um, no, it's not mandatory, it's not, it's not.
I turned it down.
Yes, yes.
Um, I seem to recall that I turned it down as well, but we did use some of it last year for events that were put on, um, and it was found that we were able to draw on, and so.
Basically, allowances are out, are out there, because the, the, the government have recognised that some people may have financial hardship by doing the job you do. And you, answers across, but let's call themselves volunteers, you are volunteers but on steroids, because you're legally summoned to attend these meetings, and you are entitled to have this allowance, the government has decided at the level. Actually, it's not the government, it's an independent body that sets these allowances across Wales. So last week, um, county council voted on airs because they're required to, and they get massive stick for every year because they have to vote for it. Um, you just need to make a decision tonight whether to pay fifty two pounds to each councillor or allow full reimbursement. That's it.
Sorry, I didn't catch it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
But if it's full reimbursement, probably it's a lot more than just a two quid.
That's, that's a decision.
But it doesn't make any difference, because we don't claim it, we just write.
Yeah, but you can't sneak them a half hour, the councillor's somebody else who comes in.
So other town councils, I've, I've basically assumed that the members are opt out, and it's not correct, because it's actually a decision for all of you individually.
And you've got a councillor to come in, who's elected, who gives you a bill for fifteen hundred quid.
Well, no, yes, you need to think about it, yes.
Okay, um, Richard.
Yeah, it's, it's just a question, fifty two pounds or full office reimbursement? So, um, you would require a receipt, presumably, for the cost of office equipment.
Yeah, because it's consumable, so like.
Um, is there any limits on that?
Uh, no, because it just says full reimbursement.
No, 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 in theory, no, I mean, it has, it has to be reasonable, and it has to be approved.
Fifty two pounds then.
I, I think fifty two pounds would be more straightforward instead of messing around with receipts, but.
Okay, is, is that a proposal that, okay, is there a second?
And I want to withdraw my proposal, please.
Okay, thank you.
Now you've asked a question, I was sure we were right in this, because the last time anybody addressed us on this, it was down when every councillor had to walk in and tell the town clerk what he wanted. It wasn't something that half the council could afford the other council, uh, I would have.
No, well, it's, it's, it still is.
Yeah, you're all correct, but it is a matter for you individually, but the council has to have a policy, and what it does. So the council is a corporate body.
And then we write to you saying we don't want.
Right, that's right, and I've got to inform you to sign tonight.
So we have to take this on.
Yes, you do have to take this on.
Yeah. Because you have to, you have to do one, you have to do one or the other, and then you, you, it's up to individual councillors whether.
You, you, that's up to you to opt out.
Yeah.
Got it.
So we're all clear now what we're voting on, so we do, we have a proposal for the, from Richard, I think, is it Richard or Bill?
Richard.
Richard, and thank you, and seconded by, thank you. And you have.
If we've got to adopt it, then we've got to.
Okay, so those in favour of these.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up for what we're taking the money.
Sorry, Carol and Julie, uh, a recording vote's been requested, so we'll go around individually.
I'll go first, uh, Alison Davis.
Alison?
Sorry.
Um, Stan?
For.
Uh, Billy?
Of section.
Uh, Carol?
For.
Chris Davis?
Except just.
Uh, Dave?
For.
Stel?
In favour.
Julie?
For, but I won't be taking any money, our taxpayers are paying enough.
That's fine, there's Morag.
For.
Nick Howells.
For.
Bill.
For.
Bill Richard.
Yeah.
Richard Church.
For.
Sally?
Yeah, the latter.
And Bill.
Yeah, for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carri, just, um.
Yeah, so, um, I think, um, Alison has, um, proposed that you don't take any of the others besides the town that came in. Basically, I think, I think, I've just seen what she's saying.
Yes.
Sorry, Clark, is, is a, a, a brief email to you acceptable?
I've got some letters we need to like sign.
Probably, yeah.
So that. So in relation to all the others, there is only one I have an issue with, is, and that is the one where, um, councillors are reimbursed for direct blocks, that they have to attend, um, council business. So we want to encourage people who are employed to, um, attend and, and do things. Um, and I know we have already this year had somebody who had to attend an interview that was in the week, during weeks' time, um. It would, it would suffer a financial loss in doing that, and I think each, each pays on its merits, um, but I think we should, should still allow that to happen.
Can I just say, that person was me, I was a chair of staff and took a day off from work to do Richard's interview and Vanessa's, was told by this councillor that I'd be paid for it, and was never paid for it. Didn't they? I, I just got emailed four, five times to ask for what I need to do, I had no help, I was told that I didn't, because Vanessa couldn't do anything about it. Oh, yeah, I'm fucked, but.
Okay, well, let me check that up.
Fair enough, I'm not bothered, I'm not really bothered by that, anyways, since I made the difference, I've gone back, I have got two children, that's full day's pay that I lost. So, in, in order for nobody else that to happen to again, I think you should.
Okay, good, well, thank you very much for bringing that.
I'm not bothered by that, what I said is true.
We will, we, we, we'll move into it, just thank you.
So Morag is actually proposing that we adopt, uh, we determine that if a pay-out financial loss is for approved duties to be agreed, actually, there is a limit in the, in the report of what, um, the council can pay.
I would second that proposal.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so, does everybody know what we're voting?
I can't hear what's going on, I'm sorry, I've said it for the last three years here.
I know.
And this is the, this is the, the annual meeting, but I can't hear, I've been.
You kiss things off, that's my.
They, I don't know why, but the, yes, they do seem to be poor, and I don't know whether there's interference from something, or. Um, I, I know it, uh, the last, the last meeting, we did try to do something with volume, and it caused feedback which was even worse, so, anyway, I'll. I, i- if I could relax and speak to, to, to be as close to the mic as you can, thank you. So, do we, uh, do you want to read out what we're voting?
So, so Morag has proposed that we, um, provide financial loss compensation for members attending approved duties, which are agreed by the council. The last determination, seven, two thousand and twenty-three, agreed with all of us.
Okay, so everybody clear on that, and seconded by councillor Davis, so those in favour of that, please.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Recorded vote on this one.
Bill, okay, yes, we will, don't, don't ask for a recorded vote on everything.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you, thanks.
If I can't hear what's going on, I'd like to be able to read what's going on after.
Okay.
I'm going to run our forms, um, councillor Davis.
In favour.
Um, councillor Ben.
In favour.
Billy.
In favour.
Carol.
In favour.
First. Stig.
Uh, Dave.
In favour.
Stel.
In favour.
Julie.
In favour.
Morag.
In favour.
Nick.
In favour.
Stel.
In favour.
Stel.
Against.
Uh, Richard.
For.
I.
For.
And.
In favour.
That's, um, brilliant.
Okay, thank you, thank you all very much, um.
Uh, the next, the next one is mayor, um, the mayor somehow is.
Yes.
And, and basically interject the others, I think we can not put them both together.
Yes, okay.
I'll be proposed up.
So, sorry, Bill, your, your proposal is what?
Uh, we, uh, the mayor's last, we paid, uh, all the others not being.
So the mayor's allows plus thousand five hundred and the others, uh, need to be paid, okay, so, um, this is seconded for that? Yeah, thank you, thank you. Uh, those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Uh, that's, that's unanimous.
Yeah, excuse me.
Sorry?
Jimmy.
What are you thinking?
Sorry, my answer.
Okay, thank you all, that's unanimous, thank you. Yes, thank you all, uh, item ten two is the bank mandate, to consider the bank mandate an authoritative decree on the council's bank accounts.
And so the RFO is asking if anyone else, um, would like to do it, we currently have seven people. Uh, we've got councillor Bailey, councillor Church, councillor France, councillor Howells, councillor Fitzgerald. Councillor Davis, Alison, and councillor Ben Garth, is there anyone else that would like to be on the bank mandate?
Hands up.
No way.
I make it seem.
Yeah.
Yeah, should it not be the chairs of each committee?
So I was gonna say, so in other councils, they, they name the post, um, so they say, they say mayor deputy.
Yeah.
And RFO, um, they say chair of finance, you know, that type of thing.
I think having that many people in charge of me having to sign checks is ridiculous.
Yeah. Councillor.
That's what I'm going to do, because you haven't got chairs in the committees anyway.
No, but we can name them, we can name them.
But a few weeks ago, you asked me if I'd go on the manhood and I said yes.
Yeah, but the council has to agree.
You haven't got me there.
But, but that's the current signatories, there is, there is currently on the bank mandate.
Can I propose that we have the mayor, deputy mayor and the chairs of all the committees?
Yeah.
Whoever they be. Yeah, thank you. Makes sense, and so seconded by councillor Arnold. Uh, those in favour?
Hands up.
Recording all, please, John.
Phil, it's not funny.
Uh, Ben.
Ben.
Sorry, I had trouble there with the mic, um, abstain.
Okay, um, Billy.
In favour.
Uh, Carol.
Abstain.
Okay, uh, Chris.
Abstain, please.
Dave.
Abstain.
He just walked back in the room.
Yes, that's why I'm saying.
Estelle.
Abstain.
Uh, Julie.
In favour.
Morag.
In favour.
Nick.
In favour.
Bill, in favour. Bill. Richard Church.
In favour.
Sally.
Over.
Uh, Bill.
In favour.
That's us. Um, we can review it in the future, I think if there's not that many on there, we, we, we're struggling, we'll, we'll.
Thank you. Item ten three, investment and reserve strategy to adopt the revised investment and reserves round twenty-six. As recommended by the finance committee, and that's appendix K.
Um, just to say, chair, there's a minor typographical error, yet, um, I put the word budget instead of budgeted, um, which we will amend if you adopt it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillors.
Just one point, um, the first bullet point in reserves, it says, um, now. Should it be between four and six months or should it be keep six months of extended track?
Oh, apologies, so it's, it used to say three to six and I took out the words three because that's what the finance committee agreed and I forgot to take the word between that. So I will take the word between.
Okay, so it reads six months, it doesn't.
Yeah, keep six months.
Could I, could I ask, at this stage, should we say aim to have, uh, that's, it, it's a question.
Um, I think because it says we'll commit to the following principles, so you're kind of signed up to that, so that's also at the moment, six months of adventure will be challenging.
Okay, thank you, Alison, um. So it's proposed by councillor Alison Walters and seconded by councillor Bailey, so those in favour, please?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Uh, those against? More extensions? Pretty extensive, essentially, that's correct. Um. Ten four, state meetings, uh, we've got a, a schedule there of, uh, proposed meeting dates for the municipal beginning of twenty-five, twenty-six.
Those with extension. I'm seconding that, let's go.
Yep, okay, those in favour, please?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Those who are against?
All right, okay, yeah. Sunday and Sunday.
Seems that's unanimous, did you vote on that, Esther?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous, anything, thanks. Uh, okay, thank you all, right, uh, item eleven, these are the outside bodies, um. And these are listed up on appendix M.
Can I just summarise and go through them?
Yeah, thanks.
Parity, um, okay, so you've got Burgess Land Trust, which you all are, uh, because we're a corporate trustee. Um, this is about the current trust and not the new CIO, we've already agreed the representatives who will be on the new CIO, I believe it is Morag. Ben and Bill, I think, that way?
This was that one, too?
That's, that's on the new CIO, so that's not on the list because I'm just, we're not voting on that one. I will have to look back, I, I definitely see it in minutes.
We're, sorry, we're talking about Burgess Land.
Yeah, I, I, I was on a tangent, sorry, Richard, um, so objective two committee, so, uh, Dr Harvey has written to us.
I think you've got, you may have got the wrong names there, because it's Morag.
And Richard.
Phil and myself.
Yeah.
Over the CIO?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, no, no, we're not talking about the CIO, I was just saying that we've already decided then, we're not deciding yet tonight.
No.
Sorry.
No, but, yeah, the trust to objective Castle, that's wrong as well.
These are the names we've got from Tony.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
There was, there was you, and was it, and George, it was you?
No.
No, Castle.
No, me.
Okay, sorry.
Basically, um, Tony has written to us saying there's vacancies, um, these, these are appointed for the entire term of the council. But of course there's vacancies, so you need to decide tonight who's going on the Gumbrod Ward one and the Labele Hall Ward one.
So, chair, um, during this, so I didn't count, um, Burgess Land as, uh, or. Those committees as external bodies, so I didn't include, but during the year, I replaced, um, David on the objective two committee.
Okay, well, Tony's written to us saying that we need to be appointed tonight, it just makes sense that whoever needs to go on them, if, if you want to be allowed to be a manager. On whatever the council decides.
So Gumbrod wants somebody.
So don't vote in someone and, and the other one.
But do we have to vote on, on these individually, don't we?
Um.
I think we just need to have enough represented.
Because what if we want to promote somebody else?
I'd probably say, you could probably vote on block at the end, after we, same as we did in elections and committees, as in who wants to go on, we'll write their names down.
Uh, just a question, was this his current nominee?
Yeah.
So if, say, for instance, we wanted to, um, put somebody forward, somebody else forward for the Castle Ward.
Yeah.
I would like to nominate councillor Arnold.
Okay, you could do, you can amend this document.
No, you can't.
So we can, we can vote it, of course we can.
These positions are appointed for the length of the term.
Yeah, but the Burgess Land, it's, it's changing now, it's, yeah.
It hasn't changed yet.
So, so the Burgess Lands Trust Objective Two ones are appointed for the term of the council, so they cannot change, but the ones with vacancies can. The rest of the appointments, you can change.
Of course, we can change if it's a current nominee, we can nominate whoever wants.
No, I just, I've just put common, current nominee to highlight it, it was already our nominee.
So I think technically, we, we want trustees, but we nominate.
But we're not for much longer, which the councillors.
No, that's not the same.
We're not for much longer.
Yes.
It's just the.
Yeah.
So, chair, I'd like to sign, I'd avoid any objective two Burgess Land trusts, I've been doing it, yeah, for a year now, so.
Okay.
Sorry, can I hear that, please?
Uh, councillor Bailey is, uh, putting herself forward as our, uh, nominee representative. On the planning of award Burgess Land, uh, objective two committee, um, at the moment, there's a vacancy. Uh, councillor France?
Yes, happy to second that nomination, fellow, fellow councillor.
Okay, um, are there any other nominees for that ward? No, okay, so, uh, do we need a vote?
No.
No, okay, so, uh, nominees are Alison Davis and Morag Bailey.
Yeah, we, okay.
We have been nominated, when you can't just say when there's a vacancy, it's, this is the time, it's once a year, we have to nominate.
But, but, but certain, certain ones are to, the entire term of the council, so certain ones we can't touch. But I was gonna go for each one individually and explain which ones you can and which ones you can't, but so, so Morag, I think is everyone's in favour of it.
Yes, yeah.
And Gumbrod needs one.
Can I, can I, uh, propose councillor Cal Robinson to that?
Yes, I will take that.
Uh, thank you, Carol. So, Gumbrod Ward, um, is, uh, is Estelle and Carol?
Okay, right, so Welshwood Church in Wales, so, um, the town council is required by the, um, government of maintained schools, Wales Regulations two thousand and five. To appoint some called an additional community governor, so you have the entire vote, you can appoint them if you want. The current nominee, I think, is you, Chris. But I'm not, this, this list is, I'm just working off agendas, so, so are you still a nominee, are you, do you want to continue as a nominee or is it someone else's one?
No, I don't know.
Okay, so that, that will be a vacancy, so we need to appoint to that.
Okay, uh, does anybody want to put themselves forward, Welshwood Church in Wales Primary School? Uh. Yeah, okay, so councillor Brown has, uh, offered himself for that.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, is there anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the next one wouldn't kick Chris off anything, the next one is, um, is, that's what I'm going to try to look. Now, I believe our, our rep was you, Richard, but you've switched to an LA maybe or a community. And, and I think it was you, Sally, from the minutes, uh, I'm not entirely sure, so are you happy to?
I've not, she's done it before, we just started it off, so, yeah, I'd have to stay on that because I've got good relationship with her.
Okay, thank you, Sally, so school, Gumbrod, Etrashland, it's, uh, Sammy. Um, Billy, does Ben want to do that because he speaks Welsh, I'm just looking. Well, it's up to, it's up to you guys.
I'm quite busy, I've got to be honest, I had to literally wake up at five this morning and get back to this meeting in a pretty shocking way. And I'm absolutely knackered, so that's work at the minute and for the foreseeable, so my time is short.
Thank you, Ben, thank you.
That's the wrong way around, I should be with Laura.
Right, okay, this is why I asked, this is why I asked you all to tell me which bodies you're on, because the minutes are not really.
Sorry, I, I'm with Laura Tuffin. Which is, uh, Chichester Wales, it's the big new school.
We've got two, we've got two big new schools, so, so, okay, who's with Laura and who's with Anne Karen?
I'm in order, so you've just said you were.
I'm, I'm very happy to stand down.
Okay, so Sally is with Welshwood Church in Wales, so we need, we need someone to be.
Is Gumbrod, Etrashland?
No.
Yeah, I've proposed, Bill, yeah.
It's a, it's a lovely new building.
You'll propose.
Okay, okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Right, the ne- the next trust is the TJ Evans Trust, and Mary Dusimer has made at the last annual meeting to remove cancers from this outside body. I've spoken with Vanessa and she has updated me to the fact that apparently their governing document says that we cannot remove our membership. Uh, but also I'm advised that our membership there is, is for the entire term of the council, so there's no change, but I do believe that, Nick, you resigned as a member, as mayor. But what we need to do with the TJ Evans Trust is check their governing document to see which positions are actually required, and then we'll come back to that.
Yes, I, I, I came on to TJ Evans Trust as in my role as mayor.
That's right, but then there's a minute saying that you resigned from it.
And that, how many members can go on that?
I think it's three.
Nick resigned, but he finished as mayor.
Yeah.
He was the mayor of Exifion, I think.
No, so it's mayor plus two members.
Uh, and I've, and I've never taken any active role in it either.
But the constitution says that the appointed, uh, trustees.
Yeah.
Will be two from the council plus the sitting mayor, whoever it is.
That's fine.
Phil has, Phil has an invite to go to every meeting, but obviously he's tied up and he can't get through.
So, but I'm pretty sure this one is a term, a term, so we're ignoring it tonight. Yeah, uh, Parisland Museum, you took yourselves off, Parisland Club.
Uh, uh, Parisland Museum, I, I added. And my confessor's mayor, yes, I think, is that right, isn't he, Graham?
Similar situation, the constitution of the, uh, Parisland Museum Trust says that the mayor of the time.
Is a trustee.
Trustee.
For the world.
And then just taken off one update from me, that was totally wrong.
Okay, that's just the minutes I'm working on from that, sorry.
And I, but I, I'm, I'm happy to be a trustee and, and have attended.
And Parisland Club, I wasn't sure what their constitution says, so I'm, I'm looking to Richard to guide me.
Um, I think it says that, um, there were two members of the board appointed by. Town council, I think one of them previously, um, was you yourself, Nick, because you were attending. I would, yeah, not sure if we've any other one, it's, it's, there, there, certainly there's two places on this, yeah.
Do you?
And Estelle's target.
And Daisy wants as well.
Yes, that's right.
Um, should we, should we check and come back to, to another meeting?
Can do.
I'm happy to, because we're checking the TJ Evans and we're checking.
Yeah.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Um, uh, the other one, Welshwood and Sandberg Light Railway, I don't know what involvement you've got, Ben, but I'm pretty sure I found a minute that said that. The previous town mark two ago was a member. Because he was a member and not from the council, so I'm not sure we actually can appoint to that body, uh, but it is on the minutes of last year. And then the rest of them are correct, um, the One Voice Wales Montgomery Area Committee, I've spoken with One Voice Wales. We get to elect two representatives to that body, and the larger councils want, we get to represent, we get to let one member. So currently the members for that is, is Alison, so there is a vacancy on the Montgomery area committee.
The other person that has been attending is Morag, she's attended throughout this year.
Um, councillor Spencer and then councillor.
I'll propose more.
Uh, Phil, did you want to? Okay. Um, it is, uh, this is one, one vacancy on the larger councils.
No, the Montgomery Area Committee.
It's three people altogether, isn't it?
Yes.
One on one or the other.
No, so, uh, yeah, three on, three in total to One Voice Wales, two on the Montgomery Area Committee plus the town clerk. So currently it's councillor Alison and there was a vacancy.
Okay, so, so we've got two, two, uh.
You're two, you, you've got two nominees.
Nominees, so we'll be.
No, no, there's one vacancy.
There's one vacancy, we've got two nominees, we've got, uh.
Alison is one.
Amerson's already qualified, so, so, uh, councillor Spencer and councillor Pritchard. Uh, I think we need to vote then, don't we?
No, I propose more.
Yes, but, Bill's proposed himself.
Oh, yes, a real seconders.
Dating second.
Yeah, but if you want two for the one committee, you have one for the other, that's what you said. Yeah, so the other two would more have been.
No, 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 so there's only one vacancy, there, there are two.
Shall we, shall we take the one by now? If you just second, really, 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 okay.
And, um, is, is there, is there a second for councillor Pritchard? Thank you, Estelle, so we will, so we will, we're doing, doing it on a show of hands, um. Those, uh, in favour of Morag taking that appointment?
Hands up.
Hands up.
And, and those in favour of councillor Pritchard?
Abstaining, so do.
We're doing that, sorry.
One Voice Wales.
Okay, so yes, and so our reps on that body are councillor Alison Davis and councillor Morag Bailey. For the Montgomery Area Committee, and then the last one is the larger councils committee, which is Alison.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I understand, because I think you'd actually do, both do a very good job, I think you do an excellent job, Phil, but, um. It's not.
Phil's got him.
Yes, Phil.
I'll propose yourself, because I'm one of the two.
So to remove Alison and put yourself.
Sorry?
To remove Alison and put yourself.
You haven't done this one yet, have you?
Yeah, no, no, Alison, Alison's already the best, she, she's already the representative, so if you're proposing yourself.
Alison is gonna take two seats there, I think.
There's only two seats.
Well, there's not, there's three.
Yeah, there's two different committees, basically Alison is our rep on both currently.
I checked the one, the one, yes, it is.
So Alison is a rep on both of them?
Alison's a rep on both of them, but Phil is proposing that he is the rep on the larger council committee, which will actually remove Alison.
And somebody else have a go.
Let's have the council.
As well, I, I, I'm represented currently on the larger councils committee is councillor Alison Davis.
I second that.
Uh, yeah, so we need, if, if councillor Pritchard is proposing himself for that role, then we need to have another vote. Sorry, Estelle?
Both seconded.
Okay, uh, so, uh, and this is second of councillor Davis.
Me.
Yes.
I'm proposing, basically.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll take a vote again. Uh, those in favour of councillor, councillor Davies having that appointment.
Okay, chairman.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Those gains. It doesn't really matter, does it? And I'm, I love staying again. Thank you. So, yes, I suppose it is.
Yeah, I'll finish with the annual business.
Yes, we are. Uh, okay, we're making progress. Uh, twelve is minutes of matters arising, um, firstly, the previous meeting with full council. Uh, the resolutions are all set out in the, uh, decision log at the end of the minutes, um, I'm sure you've read. Uh, we can deal with any matters arising presently. Uh, but I think the only vote that we need at this stage is to whether to accept those minutes as an accurate record. So is there a proposal that they will accept it as an accurate record?
Um, there's not a proposal that they'll be taking as an accurate record, because councillor Stella Davis's name is spelled twice.
Oh, okay.
And needs to be corrected.
Yes. Okay, thank you for bringing that to my attention. We will, uh, amend the minutes accordingly. Um, subject to that, is there a proposal to accept? Thank you, Morag, sitting down. Councillor, thank you. And those in favour?
Hands up.
Okay, thank you. Any against? Any extensions?
Hands up.
Your statements. And see.
Um, I'm sorry to do this now, but in the full council draft, it's, there's something. Um, at the end of the resolution to authorize, uh, councillor Colonel Robinson and councillor Alison Davies to attend the One Voice Wales meeting. It says that councillor Philoey abstains, and it also says councillor Philoey opposed.
Yes, I, I wondered that when I read through them, um, I don't know whether it's possible to propose to be propose, propose a resolution and then abstain from it. I can't, I, I'm sure it is possible. I can't think why I would have done that, but it looks.
It looks as if you do, yes, and I.
Anyway.
None of us picked it up at the time.
I know, thank you.
Yes, it doesn't alter anything.
No, it doesn't.
No.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, are there any matters arising from the minutes of full council?
Could I just say, I really, uh, to our town clerk, I really think that this, uh, ta- tabulated form at the end of the minutes that shows where we are up to with things that were, uh, resolutions is great. Thank you very much.
Great, yeah. Just to, there's a few that I'd love to get ticked off the list, but they're a bit late. Um, but we have now, uh, entered into the finance agreement for the John Beer loan, so that could be ticked off.
So we're going to stand the force.
Yeah. Chairman, can you release three please on?
I'm.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Your point is really a short word.
Right, okay. Um, so we need to record in minutes the chances that we have, so we have some of councillor Pritchard, the greeting. You're on item twelve one, matters arising to council, yes, last of council. Uh, I take it there are no matters arising, so we can move on, can we?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. Thirty one is the staffing committee, May twenty twenty five. I think, uh, councillor David France was in the chair for that meeting. Um, I don't know which of you wants to take this.
Yes, I'm happy to read this out conveniently presented by, uh, one of the town clerk, yes, a recommendation to approve chainsaw training plus qualification at Mygod, for three staff at the cost of one thousand nine hundred and fifty pounds.
Got a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see how you need to have three staff doing that at that price, because, you know, not going to need three people chainsawing at once. So I think you can reduce that cost significantly by having one dedicated person to the chainsaw.
That, that law work for the chainsaw.
It, it was, it was the committee decided.
I think those three members of that. No work in chainsaw.
Yeah, but then the committee decided to off-skill all members of the operations team, but one of them declined, so it was decided.
What are you going to do?
Okay. Yes, so that's, that's very true. So. So any, are there any other observations anyone would make on that?
Can be an end to the world.
Uh.
And as you say, chairman, I have to say before you, this speaker is as plain as data, no matter what, and I'm already, I'm already a guy from that one. This speaker is plain as day.
That's knackered as well.
Look, but that one's knackered. That's why I can't hear.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. I, I know there are difficulties that we'll have to try and, uh, resolve it.
Come and sit here. Can I have this?
That's nice, yeah.
Just as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Phil. Um, is there a proposal to accept the staffing committee, uh, recommendations?
Happy to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, okay, so can we have a vote in favour, please?
Hands up.
Okay, any against? Against the extensions?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Yeah, thank you all. Strategy Policy and Development Committee, May twenty five, Phil Pritchard was chairman of that committee, he's now left the meeting, so does anybody want to take that? Uh, from the committee? Thank you, Morag.
Okay. Um, Land and Arden School, um, we authorised, uh, is recommended to authorize offices to engage in Paris County Council over the protection of the Wigan Park and pursue action to preserve the past for the public, so that and legs should be made into a right of public right of way. And next one, the car parking barrier system, it is recommended to not proceed with the proposal in charge for parking at Mysedro. Item eight point six was a special lien policy, which we recommended, the special lien policy be adopted. And item eight point eight honorary titles of community board, it was recommended honorary title and community boards be adopted.
Thank you, Morag. Um, and that, that's appendix C in your packs. Uh, are there any questions arising from any of that, or shall we move to a vote to adopt? Councillor Spencer, I move. Okay, thank you. So.
I'll give a second.
So our councillor France, so vote in favor, please.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Presumably with the exception of the recommendations seven, which we have.
Yeah, so I'm blinded, because I split out the committee one to lock them under the committee item, and then I left the other recommendations that were due with committees, that's the recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Richard. Okay, so that was passed. Uh, are there any gains?
No.
I think there are any exceptions, thanks. Uh, planning committee, May twenty twenty five, um.
It didn't meet.
It didn't meet, no, it wasn't for it.
We're for it, we're. We're for it.
No.
I apologize, I don't want it very well.
No, it was, it was very, it was very lonely, so.
We are the most chat.
As councillor.
Can we formally, uh, record though, um, our, our regret, this, uh, meeting was in quarries. Um, uh, you know, there were those who apologized as councillor Pishell did, but there were those who were simply absent, and, uh, that's disappointing.
Yes, yes, it was, it was disappointing. I think we can minute that.
Hopefully something that will be addressed by the new committee structure.
Yes, indeed. Right, for thirty four is the events and tourism, tourism committee, May twenty five. Uh, Chris gave his apologies for that meeting and Phil was in the chair, so I don't know if Chris, if you would.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll tell you. I was actually holding a sunbed down in, in Greece.
I know.
Uh, trying to, trying to stop that, uh, flying off. Uh, yeah, I'm do. I'm sure it was a good meeting, uh, um, recommendation, uh, to book a face painter, uh, and balloon modeler, uh, on the, on the terms set out in the accompanying paper. A recommendation that the nineteen forties weekend to allow use of the town hall free of charge for twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I've got it.
Yes.
I've got a question.
Thank you. Uh, I'll take Billy first and Sally.
Yeah, my question for this is that last year when we asked, and I've asked, the two years I've been on here, by helping with the boxing club. Who paid for the hire of the whole of this hall for two days, who were actually doing something for the children of this town. I get knocked on every year, and this year we did manage to get Mike had it for half price. And we made the decision that any, um, charity or any event of that, well, would come to here, and that we would be given a reduced half price. And all would, excuse me, as all of a sudden, this has come back as a recommendation from the events committee that we now give it to Alan Crowe and Martin Clonties again for free, and it doesn't bode well with me, because I know it's a fantastic event, that it makes a lot of money. Um, and everything Mike makes, every single penny goes back into that, um, charity for the children, and I, I, I'm really, and I strongly think about it. If you're going to offer this, then it needs to be offered at a half price, same as everyone else, we agree, not three, two years in a row.
Yep, um. It, it has been quite controversial, there are, uh, all sorts of proposals, uh, as to how we charge for rooms of town hall and court exchange, indeed in any, uh, of our properties. Um, and we do need a, a proper pricing strategy, and we need to decide what charities constitute of, you know, uh, uh, reasonable. I mean, as it was given to Alan Crowe simply because of the importance to the town, thankfully we've done it before, but there were those that thought that it should be.
That year.
Yes.
We said that one year only, it would be half price next year.
I know, so is that your point that you wanted to make, Sally?
I'm going to propose that we do the same for Alan Crowe, as we've done for the box, Welshful Boxing Club, and he's offered it half price.
I don't agree with that. Um, so change, because it's a recommendation from the committee again. Uh, if you vote on the recommendation of the committee first, and then whatever, whenever it's left.
Yes.
I was against that.
Um, because you want, Chris, and then I'm, you know, Morag.
Yeah, ju- just, uh, just coming back to that, I totally one hundred percent agree with, with councillor over there, uh, it, it. I certainly would have had a, a, a lot to say about it if, if I was in the chair on that evening, but, um, the, the problem is, we've done it once, and they expect it again, and we are going to create a precedent, but, uh, councillor Spencer is exactly right. If the boxing club wants to come here and they're helping youngsters and, and families and, and young kids get them off the street or whatever, they're certainly more as entitled to, to a free free, uh, weekend or whatever at the town hall than Mr Crowe and his, his committee.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Morag next, then councillor Rowan, and then councillor Waltham.
Yeah, thank you. Um, again, I was on a beach somewhere when this committee was being held. Um, my issue is, at finance committee, we'll see later in the minutes, we are holding a working committee to look at the review of the, the charges. And, and I'm concerned that we're making decisions like this before that review is completed. Um, because what the aim is, that once the review is agreed and set out, then that is what we do, there's no no, you know, no leeway, no, no, somebody gets it cheaper because we know them or they're doing this. So it's very clear what we will charge, you know, what we'll charge, what discounts we will give for certain groups. Um, so I'm allowed to make a decision on this until that review is completed.
Uh, right, okay, um, who's, who's, Chris?
Can I, can I just come back and say, I, I, I totally agree with that, we need to go out, we need to do a review, uh, and see. I would say at least a fifty percent, uh, reduction, uh, most a fifty percent reduction for the whole of the town hall if they're using it for that weekend.
Okay, um. Phil and Ben then.
Yes, I, I, I think that the meeting suffered from the absence of, um, uh, of people who would have guided us, um, on this issue. Uh, now that Billy mentions it, I, I do recall that, that, that decision quite clearly, and, um, I think that takes precedence over any decision that was made at, at that commission.
It was actually passed at full council, but it was only offered. Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh, councillor Waltham.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, um, I think there's clearer consensus and I fully support councillor Spencer's position. Can I suggest then to move us forward that we vote on the recommendations individually? And, uh, I obviously recommend that we all, uh, vote against the second recommendation. Thanks.
Okay, Ri- Richard, did you want to come in before we put?
Well, ju- ju- just quickly, because I think they're moving to a consensus on this, and I, I, but I understand Morag's point of our review under, underway. I think the problem is, is that the forces weekends, they're going to know, they need to know what they're going to pay. And we have to make a decision on it, and whatever.
I'd say, yeah, just to say, because the re- the review wouldn't be recommending anything for this year's current budget, it will be the fees and charges for the next budget. Um, but if there's already a resolution in the full council minutes that, um, they pay half price, then we're going to.
Okay, it's fifty percent. We gave the, we gave the Welshful Boxing Club, because basically what happened, just in a nutshell quickly, was we let Alan have it for free.
Yes.
And I said, well, if we're letting Alan have it free, please, can we let Mike have it for free?
Okay.
And they wouldn't let it, they, they didn't vote to let, freely let Mike have it for half price. So I suggested, well, if you're going to do that, that needs to be going forward for the, them same people.
Yes, basically, just to update people who were, who were there, the committee had a letter from nineteen forties weekend asking for it to be free, the same as last year, so it just went to the committee, that was that. So, and then, and the committee decided to recommend it to the senior. Spencer said, I think that's things sensible, let's take the recommendations one by one, and then you can make this one a second one.
Yeah, okay, so.
Based on that recommendation, Chair, I propose that we'd say to Alan fifty percent of the cost going forward and pulling it every year.
Okay.
Not free.
Okay. Chris is.
Ju- just a quick one, um, I, I would, I would agree with the fifty percent, uh, and I would also agree with, with the, uh, looking into it into the future. Uh, that there's a, there's a cut off for everybody, whether they're charity or not. Uh, um, we, we have to get it in line, you can't carry on giving one twenty percent and one fifty percent because you've created a precedence. And they're going to come back and knocking at the door.
So actually, Chair, and this, I think what Sally's saying is she'd like to amend this recommendation, which is fine, so, um, I think what Sally's saying is she'd like to take the word free of charge out and replace it with fifty percent.
Yes.
So then if you could vote on the amendment, then they will vote on the recommendations.
Most of them. And you take item eight first, which is kind of like presenting that there's no dissent, that's the one nation, so can we take a vote on that first of all, please? So those in favour, what have we brought in on first? Item eight is the carnival.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hands up.
Unanimous. Uh, item ten then, nineteen forties weekend, um.
So I think Sally's bringing the man.
Have you got that personal down?
Yes, we're just taking, we're taking, we're free of charge and changing it to fifty percent, yeah.
And we also said you'd only do that for the one year as well, so, yeah.
But, but are you happy to do it for this year?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, 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 it's in the, it's in the.
Second year.
Two thousand twenty five, so.
It will be for this year. And then this will all be revisited, and we need some sort of strategy and policy for future hires.
I'd say that, that's perfect, that's the way around.
Okay, so we're voting on Sally's, uh, amendment, uh, that, so we allow the use of town hall at fifty percent for this year.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're rejecting this proposal.
Sally's amended it.
With amended.
Okay, amended, okay.
So we're not scrapping it. I suppose, I suppose we need a proposal.
Yeah.
Proposal, well, Sally's proposal, so Morag's seconding it. Uh, those in favour, please?
Hands up.
Hands up. Hands up. Hands up.
So, so now the recommendation reads, um, to allow the use of the town hall at fifty percent from two thousand twenty five, nineteen forties, if that's it, you can take a vote now on the amended.
Okay, so that's what's before us, can you play about?
Yeah.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Yeah. We, we didn't need to look at it though, though, uh, uh, the class, because, um, I don't want Alan tripping back next year thinking, oh, it's fifty percent, it's not going to be fifty percent every year.
You promised it that year anyway.
Yes, I know, I know we did, I know.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Chris. Um, right, services and property, uh, um.
Sorry, that's me, I'll be there.
Nick, yes.
Yes. We must take this, we take this place and then the one which is not, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, sorry, um. Nick, Nick, be- be- before, before you launch into, uh, the recommendations in that meeting, um, it's been suggested we have a very short comfort break for those that need, that might need it, so, um, we're.
Glad we rushed back.
We, we, we adjourn for a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Let's come up then.
We, something lovely.
Yeah.
So just for the record, Chair, we've lost the house of defence of our councillor.
Oh, okay, yes, that's right, okay.
Yes, that's it.
Um.
Because we've drawn the board.
I mean, I hope you don't lose any more before we begin. Okay, so we got to services and property, uh, councillor Nick House.
Yeah, recommendations, first one was the cricket club who want to erect an extra building to house their pitch roller, basically. And we agreed to hand the management of it over to the operations manager. Who will be is with the cricket club and get that sorted, so that was good. And the replacement fencing at Dollavellin, which is controversial because of the expense, but. There are requirements and British standards which the ops team have to meet when replacing fencing. So I think we went with the middle quote, which is that one.
We did.
So, uh.
And it is in the question, Chair. Yeah.
Okay, we have had comments, people say, oh, well, can you just put another wooden thing, so, no, we can't. Good.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Nick, Sally.
I'd accept, Chair.
Thank you, Sally, a second to that. Morag, thank you. Um, so, those who voted for it.
Hands up.
Hands up.
Thank you, Nick. Um, okay, thirteen six, finance committee, nine twenty five, um, councillor Bailey.
Okay, um, third recommendation is we, we, in, in the end, at the invoices we lay. Um, item four debit cards, because of the, um, lack of banking facilities in Welsh National, it's become increasingly harder, particularly to. CAC, um, so we're recommending that we authorize the RFO to obtain a purchase card, the debit card in line with the financial regulations. And item eight, fees and charges, as I mentioned earlier, it was recommended to establish a working group to review all fees and charges. The unit is made up of councillors, councillor, councillor Fitzgerald and the town clerk. And the RFO and the events planning officer. Uh, but we did also agree that if, if anybody has a burning desire to form a working group, then please just let us know and we'll include you. And we hope to report back by September to the finance committee. And, and as Lieutenant Og mentioned, these charges will then go into.
Well, that's very much.
It's either councillor Arnold or councillor Robinson, uh, then what's going in the bank.
I guess Julie, if you can meet Julie while you're not talking.
Say that again, sorry, didn't quite hear that.
Did you just meet your mic while you're not talking? I think there's something to discuss there or something. Thank you, Julie. Um, okay, so, um, are there any, uh, observations to make before we move to a vote on this?
I'd accept, Chair.
So I can do it. Exactly, thank you, Nick. Uh, so those in favour, please?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Uh, thank you all, that was unanimous as well. Um, uh, finance, are you taking this one as well, Morag?
I can't.
That don't.
So, um, item fourteen, uh, fourteen point one, the council, the council, they were approved at the finance committee and are recommending you. Approval tonight, so there's a number of, um. Appendices to those, but I think we'll vote for those on that, so that's.
On block, yeah.
On black, unless anyone's got any questions on any of those reports, you know.
And else.
Basically, that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, uh, those in favour of accepting this?
Hands up.
Thank you all very much, I think that unanimous as well, thank you.
And then item four point two, which is payment of invoices, um, in May, and I've previously reported those have been approved by the finance committee for your approval. I'm okay, I accept.
Thank you, Sam, I'm determined to get through it.
Yeah.
And second by councillor France, and those in favour, please?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Much unanimous as well, okay, uh, moving on, uh, motions for debate. Um, I just want to remind somebody, we've got a very, very good agenda, uh, when we're speaking on motions, technically, we're not always very strict about this, but councillors should try to be the only ones. Uh, you, you, you shouldn't, uh, speak again unless, um, unless there is, uh, uh, you, you're, you're asked for an explanation, it's a, it's a reasonable right of reply. Or there is an amendment, uh, and an amended motion to discuss. I'll just mention that because we've got about thirty five minutes left to get through everything else. Um. The first motion is, uh, one, one agenda by councillor Arnold, appendix A B, and this is to. Uh, deal with, um, uh, waters and the, uh, changes to the recycling rules at the recycling centre. Uh, do you want to say something about this, Julie?
Yeah, as, uh, uh, everyone's read the appendix, um. But what I want to say is, we've got due to the curtois residence, the cost, um, of them paying that extra charge for a piece of wood. Um, the health and safety side of it, and also we've got to think about our countryside, because there's going to be fly tipping. And then the council's saying they're going to save money, are they really going to save money? Because at the end of the day, people are going to be fly tipping. And then it's going to be a cost to the council to remove this fly tipping. And everyone's not being treated equal, and regarding where we live, there's a large minority. Who don't have access to the internet, so that means that they have to phone the council to book a slot. Now, that's only Monday to Friday, now is that fair? I don't think it is, so, yeah, this is the proposal, what I'm putting to everyone, so thank you.
So, thank you, Julie, I think, I think it's a good proposal, obviously, if, um, if County Council, uh, adopt any changes as a result. Then they're probably going to have to apply it at Newtown and elsewhere, uh, and given the, uh, the, the cost of doing that, I, I don't know how successful it would be. But if council is resolved to make this proposal to the county council, I, 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 for one, would support it, Nick.
Uh, I did, I've spoken at length to Julie about this, and she asked for my support, and she's actually got it. Um.
Thank you, Nick.
I'll be totally honest, I haven't used the facility since it changed, I used to use it all the time. But, um, it's not so much the booking side of it, or even the charging side of it, although I'm not happy about it. My main concerns are provisions for disabled people, and, you know, making reasonable adjustments under the Equalities Act. You don't expect somebody to get out of a wheelchair and carry a bag of compost or whatever up a step ladder, to put it in the tent, in the skid. And so from the health and safety side, I, I've had people approach me because of my, my previous existence. Asking questions about three points of contact on a step ladder and all the rest of it.
Yeah.
Obviously, this has to be risk assessment by the people in charge.
Hmm.
Uh, risk assessment, sorry. But people keep going on about the public and the disabled, but that risk assessment has to cover the members of staff as well.
Yes.
And they're not being expected to carry, to assist people, to carry bags of, of rubbish, et cetera, items of rubbish.
Yeah.
Off these steel step ladders, and if somebody, when it gets winter time and it gets slippy and icy, if somebody comes down that ladder. And has a serious accident, then Pedro will.
They, they are harder to use, the, the only thing I would say about that is that the booking system is designed to make it easier for people with.
What do you do to climb a ladder?
Uh, well, well, no, because when, when you book it, if you're going to need assistance, then at that point you can address it, and having.
Not always forthcoming.
No, it's, that, that's, yeah, I accept that, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, it was next, was it?
Thank you, yeah, and I, I, I have to speak on this, obviously, as the county councillor and being involved in this decision, and, and it was one which I. Accept towards a lot of opposition, there was a big petition against it, a lot of people were concerned about it. I've been quite surprised since it's been introduced, um, and I've been looking at the comments on Facebook about it, is that a lot of people have been. Very complimentary of the staff, of the process, of the way that they have worked, and it is designed so that the staff are more available. To help people when they need help, and there's, um, a lot of people have been very complimentary of that. Um, but the new bins, yes, there are steps to climb, they're actually the same as the bins being used in other recycling centres. In Powys and, and elsewhere.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
They are, they are all properly assessed from, from the healthy sa- health and safety point of view. Um, so, I'm confident now that, that, that even measures, now that they have been introduced, I think people now. Understand the benefits of them, the fact that the, the staff are now there to help. Um, but I'm very conscious that, you know, a lot of people were worried and concerned about it. These booking systems are commonplace throughout Wales and England, um, you know, I, I, an awful lot of councils now have them. Um, and clearly, there will be a review, I know the portfolio of this area, Jackie Charles, who will look at any comments and consider them. When they are reviewed, so if the council passes this motion, then that will have to be taken into consideration. But personally, I, I won't support it because I am, um, satisfied that it's something that the council needed to do. To save money, because if we don't save money on this, then either the council tax goes up even more. Or we cut other things, like care for the elderly, or education, or something else, those are the constant difficult decisions that House Council has to make. Decide these, um, but I, I vote against the motion, but I can, I know that, you know, people, obviously, at this meeting, have a bit of interest, express their concern.
Thank you, Rich, that, that, that's helpful, um, councillor Al, did you?
Uh, just, just briefly, I mean, um, one of the good things that's come out of this is, uh, remodeling of the area that waters that gives a lot more space. And, uh, uh, removes some of the, um, dangers and difficulties that there were in what was a very cramped space before. Having said that, whilst there are no ladders, there are steps, um, that, that it, it is, uh, it's not good, and it's not easy for people with, uh, with, with mobility problems. Uh, to, I've, I've always been offered help whenever I've been there, not needed it, uh, but, you know, there's not always someone around. And I think even if, even if most people had to go up the steps, but there was, um, uh, uh, a, a, a skin available that was accessible for those with. With, um, mobility difficulties, that would make life a lot easier. The thing that I do feel though, very strongly, is that the booking system, uh, I think is very useful at the weekend when it's really busy. So that we don't have the place totally crowded and crowded as it can be. I don't think it's necessary Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and, um, if, if you had a system where you booked, uh, for Saturdays and Sundays. But you didn't need to book at other times, it would make life a lot easier for lots of people.
It helps them to monitor who's using it, and they keep track of, uh, you know, trade waste and that sort of thing.
I'm aware of that, and I, I know that, um, you know, um, having, having lots of work done at my house at the moment, that's, you know, um, trade us and so forth, or do need. Uh, to be kept to mind. Um, I would say though, that, uh, uh, I, I'm very. Thankful for this motion from Julie, because this is exactly what the town council should be doing, we need to be speaking on behalf of, uh, 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 of people. Uh, to the authorities, it's an important role of the council in this one, that we should do more.
Thank you, Bill. Jesus. Um.
Julie.
Yeah, um, I, I, I just want to say, I don't think it's public knowledge that the staff, um, are there to help, because. I've been there, and I could have a hidden disability, and no one's ever asked me, do I need any help? Also, we should be concerned about the cost, what people have to pay for like wood and things like that, because there's fly tipping going, it's going to happen, there's going to be fly tipping. All over our beautiful countryside, and that will be a cost to the council with, without, without a doubt. Um, so we have to think about that as well.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Julie, I mean, the, 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 the point of the booking system partly is that if you are going to require help, and it's not obvious to the staff, you can at that point. and it's not obvious to the staff, you can at that point request help. But I, I accept that.
But it's not common knowledge. It's not common knowledge. People don't realise this.
Well, if they book online, it, it should be pointed out to them. But I know it's not, you know, it's not going to work in more cases. And I completely sympathise with the, the, the point you're making.
I have used the booking system and used the tick. Um, my experience was that it worked well. However, um, I think in my case, when I went down and I was going to go up steps, a man came out, he said, oh, here, let me. And he stopped doing what he was doing. And the employee went and he went and did this for me. But I think it is important that um, however good your mobility, hiking big, heavy things up the steps to put in a tick is, is something different. I agree about the fact that when there's ice and that kind of thing. The other thing is that have been teething problems that I know of, where uh, people have been told they'd been char, they would be charged for an item that was patently not building material. But they were telling them that they were going to be charged for it. And the, the person took the things, took the thing home, in fact, it was a piece of glass, took it home and said, well, I'm going to put it in my rubbish. So of course, you've got to break it to put it into your, your box. So that's another thing. So I think there are teething problems.
Yeah.
I think it's a very, a key point that Julie's making, that taking, you know, a bit of wood, it's a, a there's a very big difference between taking a couple of lengths of wood, you know, short lengths of wood, and taking, you know, four sheets of used plasterboard. And I think there is that, there is that common sense element. Um, and the other thing is, is that I think Bill's suggestion, recommend, suggestion here about not having a booking system on weekdays. Um, thinking also about the fact, and this is a very broad statement, but older people being less able and being less able to use internet and the other things. If there were weekdays where they could just pop in, I think that would really help. I accept what Richard's saying about the fact that if, we've got to pay for, we've, we've got to change some things, because the council can't afford to keep going the way it is. But we need to think of the people that we are representing, and that's what, that's what this is about. So I think although we've got this in here, there are some further recommendations that I think we could add to it. Part of it's about staff training, staff awareness. Part of it's about the suggestion of weekdays. And I think the other thing is to take on board the key one that Nick has made about what's going to happen in icy weather. Because they can't stop people using the facilities during icy weather.
I, I think when the weather is particularly bad, they're cleansing.
Well, that is no help to anybody, you know. I think, I think again, to say, oh, if, if it's icy, you can't take anything to the tick. Is, you know, just because they've now put in steps, they need to think about those things as well. And I think it's, there's a lot that's working about it, but they need to go further.
Thank you, Alison.
Can I just speak, please?
Uh, is that Carol?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I do.
What I would, what I am suggesting that I am going to do is to go and ask to have a small meeting with the portfolio regarding these issues. Okay?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just wondering that in the, in the light of the comments we've had, I, I don't know, Julie, if you want to proceed with your motion as it's drafted, or whether you want to defer this so we can get consensus on what we would like to say to the council. I mean, I'm quite happy to have a vote now.
So, I, I mean, I, I'm confused about why we're doing this now, because I think the contracts have been let by Powers County Council. I think Powers County Council are quite pleased with how it's going. Personally, I've used the system. I found it very easy. And in fact, for me, because I struggled before taking rubbish down. Now, as soon as I get out of the car, they're there to help me. So I'm actually finding it easier, because I'm getting help with even moving the rubbish. You know, even pushing the rubbish over the high sided vehicles for me, it's kind of difficult. So, but, but I'm confused about why we're doing it now. I think we made representations in the consultation, consultation stage. So I'm, I'm, I appreciate Julie's thoughts on this. I don't have any issues with them charging people to get rid of rubbish. I think they should be doing that. Makes absolute sense. Um, I do think it might increase, um, flight tipping. Um, but we'll have to deal with that and start prosecuting people, sadly. But I don't, I don't know what to do at this point in time.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. I mean, people's experiences are going to be different, people's concerns are different. I, I just I don't know whether to, to take a vote on, on the motion. It is tabled, it's on the agenda. Um, or whether people would prefer it to be deferred for more discussion. Sorry, Ju- Julie, yes?
I think we need to take action now, because as I see it, um, there's going to be an accident there. And if we don't do something about it and there's an accident, then it's been discussed with us now, hasn't it? I mean, I'm quite happy if Carol will, I'll go and see the portfolio with her and have a discussion with the portfolio to see if changes can be made. But regarding, yeah, we'll, we'll pay for this. Do we really understand, like, our residents are living in poverty, they can't afford that extra four pound for a piece of wood? It's ridiculous. That four pound could be a loaf of bread or a bottle of milk for a family much struggling now. And there's definitely going to be fly tipping, and it's going to cost the council more. Most definitely. Um.
I'm almost certain that that's true. But are you, are you happy to defer a decision on this until you've had your meeting?
I, I, I recommend that I defer it, and I would like to speak to the portfolio. If that's possible.
Um, yeah, I'm sure. Is that a question? Carol and I, we can arrange it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll defer that pending that, that meeting. And then we'll look at it again.
I'd just like to, sorry, I'd just like to say that I agree with Richard, we'll arrange it, uh, for Julie, okay?
Thank you, Richard, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. If you can have a vote on deferring it, just to give you a idea. Okay, so the proposal is that that, a vote on that issue can be deferred uh, for the reasons that I've stated. Uh, is the proposal for that, yeah, thank you, Bill, and submitted by Richard Church. Thanks. So those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Thank you, that's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Just to say that Nick has left the meeting. Yeah. Ah, go on, we're only up to, um, thanks on sixteen. Yeah, uh.
Uh, the O B W N report. Yeah, that's right, this is, this is just to say, Chair, that, um, the council was awarded a highly committed award for best initiative addressing the cost of living crisis, um, for its give and take initiative. And I have met with Carol and will kind of arrange a press release when we can, as difficult to celebrate that are a highly committed one.
That's great. Was there a citation for that that we can circulate to people?
Um, yeah, I'm waiting for them to send me the report of the annual thing I didn't want to go out and send out.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
I, can I just say something? I'd also like to say a thank you to Richard, because Richard has supported me all the way through um, give and take, and also for the volunteers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, still on One Voice Wales, the innovative practice conference, we need to, uh.
It's, it's up to you. If you want to spend time on it, you can. If you don't, you don't have to.
Uh, it would be nice if you could, well, would anybody like to attend?
No, no, Alison's our rep on the, on the committees, but this is, this is for the innovative practice conference. So it's, it's electing people to go to the conference.
Okay. I would like to go if, if possible. And also, can I say that off the top of my head?
Yep.
Okay, thank, thank you, Alison.
Would I be able to go with Alison?
Um.
There's no reason.
Is it, is it, was it one representative or?
It's as many as you want. You, you pay for their invites. I can't remember what the cost is, it's a little expensive.
Yeah, no, that's, that seems fine, Carol. So Alison and yourself and the town clerk. Um, yeah, great. Okay, thanks very much. We don't, we don't need a vote on that.
Oh, we do. Do we? Yeah, because it's, it's expanded.
Right, okay, so the proposal is that Alison and Carol attend with the town clerk. Uh, Billy, okay, is there a second there?
I've seconded it.
Thank you, Sally. And those in favour? Okay, thanks. Chris, you in favour of that? Upstein, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's carry then. Um, other outside bodies, to receive reports from council representatives on each outside bodies as available.
Well, we all, we all know who our reps are now, but I don't think you. No time.
No, okay, so, so we'll, we'll come back to that another day.
This is anything I haven't been raised.
No. Uh, the consultation, the House Teaching Health Board, uh, that's Appendix A D.
Yeah, this was supposed to be discussed by S P D, and they decided to refer it to all council board decision. And basically, this is not, this is not the great environment to decide how we can decide a consultation. Uh, we can't have different people amending whatever we say. Uh, the difficulty we have is, is it closed Friday, but they've given us the extension to give a response on the proviso that we made a response tonight. Um, to summarise the discussion, S P D, it was pretty much, um, that a couple of councillors said they'd like a hospital back in mid Wales, and there's a couple of councillors said you'll never get that, because you need a hundred thousand people and specialist skills to get A D. And that was basically the discussion. But um, if the council does want to respond, I kind of need to know what you're going to respond tonight. But it is not conducive in the future. We need to get, we need to electively group together to work out a response and then bring a response back to council. We didn't have time.
No, okay, Laura.
So Chairman, um, I attended the Sustainable Powers, um, meeting weeks ago, and there was a gentleman on the Powers Health Board who, uh, who reported back then. And I think the consent, my colleagues will tell me if I'm wrong, but I came out with the consensus in the room and from other councils as well, was that the importance was the, the additional waiting time on the border in England um, for people within Powys. And, and so my view on this consultation was that if we are to give a response, that we, we do focus on, on that element of it, not on anything pie in the sky that's never going to happen, but something we can put in.
Sorry, Dave, sorry. Um, just to speed things up, if you, you could decide tonight to give me the allocated powers to work up some words and submit it on your behalf, taking into account what we're saying here tonight.
I, I think the word tarot needs to be in there somewhere.
Yes, power to with.
Yes, Diane is just going to propose what Rich just suggested. Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good idea. And, and, and if anybody has particular representations to make, if they could
At least go to me.
Richard will then prepare something that we can, um, take a decision on. Is, is everybody happy with that?
Probably that's an album that's waiting times on that too.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Eight hours for a heart attack.
Yeah. Thanks, 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 come to me, everyone.
It's not that's fault, it's just the way it is. So, yeah, ambulance waiting times, doctors waiting times.
So, we, we've got ten minutes to get through the rest of it, so. Uh, street naming.
That sort of stuff.
Paddington Development Street, Amy. And so registration and development name.
Yeah, this was supposed to be discussed by the planning committee. They thought it was important to meet. And we had a deadline, a statutory deadline to meet if we want to respond. Um, my response would be, um, they've called Lionkill, Lionkill, and not the Lionkill, it should be in Welsh. So actually, in the, in the, in the, in the forward planning meeting, we actually worked out what the Welsh would be. Uh, but it's up to your use of the language.
I'm happy with that.
I, I, I think it's complete nonsense to, to have the word in English in both, in, in both versions. That is just, just very silly.
So would you be happy for me to respond in Welsh?
Yes, respond in Welsh.
Wondered why they put the, the leisure in it, because it makes it sound like it's going to be a swimming pool.
Like the leisure centre.
Um, well, you, you, you spent no response to you.
Lionkill Park.
Yeah, Lionkill Park is fine.
Okay, so you want, you want to remove.
It's a commercial park, actually. It's a commercial.
Okay.
It's a separate.
Yes, yes.
So it would be part, whatever it is in March, shouldn't they? Just Lionkill Park.
Or, or Lionkill Commercial Park. It's not, it's not a business park, it's a commercial.
Which one do you want me to say?
I just park, I think.
That's a costly, costly as a start.
We need a, we need a vote.
I know, I know. Well, that's the, no, it's, all those in favour of, of that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, Chris.
This is no doubt. You mean that the whole development was unanimous, the unanimity of G E T C two vibes, isn't it?
Yeah. Um, right, and then the next meeting, well, the next annual meeting will be this time next year, but the next full council meeting will be on the twenty fifth. At six thirty.
No, we're, we're not, we're not going yet.
No, we've got to go, we're now, we're, uh.
Now in the confidential.
We're in, we need a vote that we now move to confidential session. Who's a proposer for that, please? Bill, uh, vote.
recorded vote, no.
All in favour?
Thank you, Richard, yeah. Okay, so, yeah.